We could request to put it underground instead.
Good.
That's good to know.
Thank you for your presentation, Christine.
Yeah, thank you. Great seeing you. Have a great evening.
Next on our agenda is public comment, and it looks like we have. Oh. I thought we were going to. That's right, we did make the amendment to the agenda. We will be going directly into proclamations. And our first proclamation is Veterans Appreciation Month. And we will start with Councilmember Vasquez.
Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high call to serve, excuse me, a high calling to serve, and have helped protect and secure the United States of America at every turn. And?
Whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service as selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And?
Whereas we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. And?
Whereas on Veterans Day, we salute those who have proudly worn the uniform of the United States of America and the families who have served alongside them. And we express our enduring gratitude, both in words and in actions for their service. And?
Whereas as many veterans face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations, we can ensure that those who have served, their nation receive the resources they deserve. And?
Whereas through their commitment to freedom, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure. And the city of Lacey resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered. Now, therefore, I, Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor, City of Lacey, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Veterans Appreciation Month in the city of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and to actively support our local veterans and their family members. Sign on this day, November 2nd, 2023. And today we have the administrator of our Lacey Veterans Hub, Keith Looker, to come and accept this proclamation.
To you, sir. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Sure.
Say more than a couple if you like.
Okay. Well, I never give up an opportunity to speak, I guess. First of all, I'd like to, as a veteran, and for all the veterans in this community, I'd like to thank the city of Lacey for this proclamation and for all the support that you've given. We would not be where we're at today without all the help and effort that the city has given us. And we continue and look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you very much for the proclamation. And thank you very much for the support for all the veterans here in Lacey in this community.
Thank you, Keith. Just real quick about the Veteran Services Hub. We all went to an event the other Friday night ago and got to see some numbers and some real statistics about what Keith and his team have done in the community. Last year, they had over 17,000 client appointments with veterans to help them, you know, acquire services and to take advantages of their benefits. And last week, I went and talked to some of our federal representatives about the Veteran Services Hub and thanked them for their contributions and future contributions that we're hoping that they will make. So we, I just, we feel like you have done a tremendous amount with what we've been able to hand over. And now, whether you guys know this or not, there are other cities who are trying to follow this example that has been set by Mayor Ryder, the city of Lacey, Keith and his team are, and they're trying to stand up Veteran Services Hubs in cities around the, around the United States now because of the example that that's been set here. So thank you once again. Next on our agenda, under proclamations, we are, we have the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. And again, we will start with Councilmember Vasquez.
Whereas since time immemorial, Native Americans, Alaska natives, Native Hawaiians, and indigenous peoples have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and tradition across generations. And?
Whereas indigenous people have played a vital role in every stage of our nation's history, and their contributions have enhanced the social, political, environmental, and economic well-being of the United States of America and local communities like Lacey. And?
Whereas we acknowledge the indigenous people who called this land home before the arrival of settlers and have been here since time immemorial. And?
Whereas the city would like to recognize that we are on the lands of the tribal people of Medicine Creek Treaty and the other indigenous communities, and acknowledge the history and disposition, dispossession that allowed for the growth of our community. And?
Whereas the city offers respect to the tribal people of the Medicine Creek Treaty and their elders, past, present, and emerging, as well as all indigenous communities in Thurston County, Washington State, and across the nation. And?
Whereas our community reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve the traditions and cultures and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants. Now, therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Malcolm Miller, City of Lacey, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities. And tonight, we are fortunate enough to have our tribal brothers here with us and coming to the podium. Well, he doesn't really need an introduction.
Good to see you. Very good to see you.
How you doing, man? And I'm gonna present this to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say a word, but then I'm gonna turn it over to this guy here, so. Well, thank you, of course, to the city of Lacey and everybody who's on Zoom here. It's good to see you. Mike, the second time I've seen you today. I saw you this morning at the SSMCP breakfast. And so for us in the Squawly, you know, we can thank you, City of Lacey, for the continued partnership, the work. You know, we have a lot of really good projects coming up. And since we got my teacher here, our historian, Mr. Hanford McLeod, I'm gonna have him say a few words real quick.
This is online. Be careful. I just want to acknowledge the city, you know, the council, the members here in the community I always talk about, especially when we refer to our village and our people here in Medicine Creek, as you acknowledge here. It's my honor to get up and just share what few words that I would say celebrates how far we have come to this point. And seeing the work that we do with Lacey, with the schools here in North Thurston, Yelm, Thurston County, it's a, I would say a privilege to do the work with my ancestors, you know, and carry on that honor and make sure that with this work, it's gonna carry forward, you know, and what we're doing and what Chairman talked about, the planning we're doing. My name's Hanford McLeod. He likes to call me the teacher, but, you know, as cousins, we got my big cousin behind me here. You know, we do this work because this is what we were taught by our, by our uncles or our grandfathers and, you know, because our fathers were there to love us and really just guide us, you know, and that's what I would say about in our village, especially in the Squawly, and what work we're doing today is sharing that, that experience of what you see in this heritage of what we call Lacey or Hawks Prairie or Thurston County and, you know, especially along the river and what we're doing, protecting and preserving that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, can we take one of your guys' 24 budgets? Actually, that booklet back there? It's good for me to practice as we move forward, too. Thank you, guys.
Please have a copy of the budget.
Deputy Mayor, if I can take a moment?
Please, go ahead.
I just want to acknowledge, yeah, it was great seeing you again for the second time, Willie, today. He's, he won't boast himself or anything like that, but he was a guest speaker at the South Sound Military Communities Partnership today, so. That and, you know, sorry I missed you guys tonight. And I also want to say hi to Keith Looker, too, so.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you. You know, one of the things that has happened with the city of Lacey and the tribe is that we we made an accord in 2012, and that accord is on the wall. We have endeavored to do projects together, to work with one another, respect one another, build one another, help each other out, and get things done that we wouldn't be able to otherwise get done by ourselves. And so those projects are in the works. We thank you for your efforts in making internet accessible in the rural areas, the truncated lines that you guys are trying to do. So that is awesome. We thank you for your future projects that are coming up. I don't know if I can, you know, talk about them in these meetings, but we've all sat in and got a chance to listen to what the tribe has planned for the future. And I think as a council, we're all very excited. So thank you once again.
And one last thing, too, Deputy Mayor, I meant to say something at the meeting this morning, too, but, you know, Willie's dad, as awesome as he is, he's getting a naval ship named after him, and he was a United States Marine, just like myself. And so, you know, that piece of cedar out in the hallway isn't just a piece of wood. It means something, has value, brings us all together. Like Hanford was saying, you know, like them teach their aunts and uncles teaching them, we have to teach our kids and our nieces and nephews as well how to value and, you know, support each other.
Awesome. Thanks again, you guys. Next up on our agenda tonight is our public comment section. And it looks like we have one person who signed up for public comment. And I don't want to butcher your last name, but it looks like Paula Shigog. Okay, please come on up to the podium and try to keep your comments to about three minutes if you can. State your name and the city that you live in, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, well, my name is Paula Shigog, and I live here in Lacey. I actually work at Big Lots out here in Hawks Prairie. And the reason I've come today is I've talked to many of the businesses out there in Lacey. We are having a problem with the hotel that's out there. We were having problems before, but once they moved all the people from Hobby Lobby, then it's gone crazy out there. We have a problem with drugs. We come to work, we find needles laying out in front of our store. We had Saturday, somebody coming in and doing fentanyl in our bathroom. Couple of weeks ago, just as an example, I had one of our side doors open up. Somebody ran out the door, and it faces the hotel, and you see this guy running up the street and around over to the hotel with his products that he's taken from us. And while I'm standing there talking to the police on the phone, the front door, I get a call on my radio that someone has now gone out the front door with more items. And then I turn around and I look to my left, and there's a guy laying on the ground with people all around him, and he's OD'd. And we have, the police, of course, have to come and take care of that. They can't take care of us because that's more important, and I totally understand that. The very next day, we had somebody OD in our parking lot in the morning. So this is just some of the different things that we're having to deal with out there. I've talked to Safeway, who I know are here today, and Ace Hardware, a couple of the other businesses there. I'm sorry that some of them didn't make it tonight. But our concern is, is that for the safety of everybody out there and the theft that's going on, it's just become ridiculous. I mean, last week, we had someone who, and this is kind of what some of the people do, is they'll come in with one person, fill up a cart full of things, and then they'll leave the cart in the store. And then somebody else will come in to get the cart. Luckily, one of our managers was looking, and they saw what was going on, because we all try to be aware of what's going on in our store with the loss prevention. And so she took the cart and took it over to the side. And then, of course, when the gentleman came in to try to take the cart out the door, he couldn't find it. And, but that's just one of the things that we try to deter. But it's become a real problem over there. You know, I don't have a problem with the people that are over there. I know that some of them are trying to get clean. I hired one of the people over there. He now has his own apartment. He has his own car. So, you know, I don't have a problem with helping people out, but these people, I just don't understand it. They just continue to keep coming to our business and they just, they bring, come in with bags, they'll fill them up. I talked to Jennifer, who is here, or Jennifer here from the housing, and she said that they have a place to stay. They have food. They give them, you know, toothpaste, shampoo, all those type of things. But what they do is come over and they steal things like electronics. I had a guy the other day come in and he actually shoved a speaker up his back, and he's humped over like this, walking out the door with a speaker on his back. And of course, we can't say anything because we didn't see him steal it. So there was nothing I could do. But I will tell you that the police department out in Lacey is excellent. They are, they respond as fast as they can. We got somebody arrested last week. They were there to take care of it. They came twice that day to take care of this one person. And so I do want you to know that I really appreciate the police department out here. They're doing a great job. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or not.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, all righty. And then Safeway is here also.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address this council tonight? Going once, going twice. Okay. Next on our agenda, we are having a public hearing tonight. Tonight's public hearing is the 2024 Proposed Budget Revenue Sources, which will be delivered by our City Finance Director Troy Wu. And now, I will open this public hearing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Miller. Good evening, council and members of the audience. We are conducting our first of three public hearings related to the 2024 budget. This particular hearing focuses on revenue sources in most particular property tax. This is the opportunity for the council, as well as the public, to make comment or be aware that we are considering property tax increases for the next year. So we'll really focus the presentation tonight on the general fund, which is indeed where the property taxes are receded into. Here you could see the total general fund resources proposed for 2024. The total budget is $87,432,207. This is an increase of just under $10.7 million. I will go through the more significant variances in detail in the following slides. But, you know, I will point your attention, the all other category there at the bottom. The primary difference there is the use of one-time reserves. We have two very significant city priorities that we're going to be starting next year, one being the police station and the other being Phase One of Gray Kuyo Park Development. But again, I'll go through the details in some following slides. I'll also point out that we do have a difference in property tax from what the city manager presented to you two weeks ago. This is about $135,000 higher than what was presented two weeks ago. And the main reason for that is the addition of the refund levy, which, again, I'll cover in detail. So it's just another way to look at the revenues by category. This is quite a bit different from what we've seen in recent years. If you look at property tax, sales tax, utility tax, BNO gambling, and emissions tax, that typically makes about 60% of all general fund revenues. What we're seeing in 2024, or what's proposed in 2024, this adds up to about 44%. This is really the impact of that all other category. The use of one-time reserves is so high that it is affecting all of the percentages. So if you look at the all other category, last year, that was only 16% of all revenues. So that is the impact that is having on our budget. So we are here tonight to mainly talk about property tax and the proposed increases for 2024. You could see the three different levies that the city does assess. The first and largest is the general levy. The projection at this point is just over 8.8 million. This is an increase of $337,178. You could see, we do have a bit of good news in terms of the voter-approved bond levy. It is going down by about half. We have currently two outstanding bonds, both related to parks. And again, these were both voter-approved. One is being paid off this December, so we will not have a levy for that next year. So you see that in the 2003 bonds. And then we have just a slight decrease for the 2006 bonds, and those will be maturing in 2026. So an overall increase of property tax citywide of about $10,328. So what makes up that change? Really, we start with this year's approved levy, and this is a levy that is approved and calculated by Thurston County. So we start with the 2023 amount of $8,488,672. And we add, we're adding three different factors this year. We have new construction coming in at $121,399. This is a result of adding about $179 million in new construction. So this is exempt from the 1% limit that you see below. So the 1% limit for 2024 is just under $85,000. This is simply a calculation of 1% of the current year's assessed or total levy. Our legal limit is this 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is less. That inflation factor this year is 3.67%, so we are indeed over that 1%. So we do use the 1% limit. And we do have the refund levy there coming in at, in the third spot of about $135,472. This is the change from the, what was presented by the city manager two weeks ago. The refund, yes?
Just a quick question, Troy. The new construction number, that's not final yet, I'm assuming, and won't be till the end of the year, probably?
It's probably going to change once more before the council considers it. You know, there's probably about three or four different changes as we get closer to that adoption. So you're probably remembering that from past years, so. This particular number, we did, it was last updated on October 20th. It did go down slightly, but it was, you know, hardly, hardly moved the dial. But yeah, I do expect it to change again. I also expect assessed valuation overall to change again. And that will primarily, that won't impact what we can collect, but it will impact the rate itself. No, the 1% is, yeah, it's on that 2023 number. So the refund levy, again, $135,000. This represents property taxes that we're authorized to collect in this current year, but there have been adjustments made throughout the year. So typically, what happens is if there's an error made by, you know, the county, or if there is a property that's adjusted after, you know, someone asks their property to be, you know, looked at again. There's also senior discounts that get applied mid-year. So that doesn't change our legally authorized amount, but since we don't collect it in this year, it gets basically forwarded to the following year, which would be 2024. So in total, again, the 2024 general fund tax levy is just about $8.8 million. I always like to show the history of, you know, where we've gone in terms of property tax. This is a 10-year history. This is 2024. We are seeing at this point properties values going down, going down about 4.2% at this point. Again, I suspect that will change, you know, here in the next two weeks. But this is the first time in 10 years we're going to see our property tax levy go up. So the last time the levy itself went up was 2013. So you could see, if you look at that general levy, the top line there throughout that 10-year period, it's just a steady decline, which really means that properties have been appreciating for the last 10 years. There's the same information over a 14-year period. You know, you could really see it graphically. Going back to 2009, of course, that's, you know, that was at the, probably the third year of the housing bubble. We saw properties declining in value right up to 2013. 2000, from 2010 to 2011, we had a an agreement with the Lacey Fire District. We voluntarily lowered our property tax levy by about $4.7 million, which allowed the annexation into the fire district, and the fire district basically absorbed our portion of sales, our property tax. So a pretty, pretty big decline there. But you could see from 2013, clear up to 2023, steady decline to the levy rate itself. But because of that 4.2% decrease to valuation, you're seeing a projected increase to the levy rate.
So just real quick, and I don't mean to interrupt, if, we can do this at the end if you like.
No, any, anytime.
Okay, so the 72 basis points for, you know, from '67, is that gonna yield a very similar result in terms of collection because it's spread out over more, more, more area, more homes? And in addition to that, we're gonna have a decrease in, a potential decrease in our assessed values?
Well, there, it's going to depend from property to property, but if you look at property tax as a whole, it will increase 1%. So this is really just a mathematical equation. So you take the highest lawful limit, which is the $8.8 million, and you divide it by the total assessed valuation across the jurisdiction, and that's how you get to this rate. So in theory, property taxes outside of the voter-approved bond levy will grow only 1%. But I'd say that from a, you know, looking at it across our jurisdiction, every home's going to be different. Some homes may not depreciate at the same amount as the city as a whole. Some actually might appreciate. It really just depends on the area and whether the county assessor did the, I think every four years, maybe it's three years, they have to do an in-depth site visit, so to speak, in terms of properties, just to make sure that they are staying within that market. But if you fall outside of that three- or four-year period, you might not get the same results. But overall, property taxes will not grow more than 1% outside of that new construction and the refund levy.
And so I think what, what, what people want to know is, are their property taxes gonna go up this year?
I, again, if they follow the, I'll actually go to a slide here that will answer that exact question. So this is a typical home in Lacey. In looking at various resources, it looks like the median house price within Lacey is about $500,000. So I basically work backwards into this slide. So a 4.2% decrease in valuation from this year, we would start at $522,000. So if your home, as an example, was worth $522,000 this year, and your new assessment goes down 4.2%, you would be sitting at a valuation of $500,000. So you take the 2023 levies, you take the valuation of 522,000 divided by 1,000, multiplied by those levy rates, that home would pay $382.40 in property tax in 2023. Now, again, if you go fast forward to 2024, if the property sees a decline of 4.2%, you see the levy rate increasing to about 72 cents per thousand. Again, you have the 2003 park levy being zero, and then you have about a 3 cent per thousand, 2006 bond levy. If this were a typical home, it would pay $377.24 in 2024, which is indeed a decrease of about $5. But again, this, it's really going to depend on the property. But again, this, it's really going to depend on the property. I'd be willing to guess that there's very few homes out there that fall in this exact same scenario. But hypothetically, if this was your home, you would see a decrease of about five dollars.
Troy, if I may?
Yes.
But this is only considering residential homes, right? Not commercial?
Because It is only residential homes, homes, and this is only the Lacey levies. There are many other levies. There's the, the school district, there's the fire district, there's the state county port of, you know, so there's many other levies. This is just limited to Lacy's. But even when you look at a commercial property, if you were going to decline four point two percent as the total, you'd have a very similar result, just in a different scale, probably.
Yeah, but, but my commercial properties that my family has is, you know, were, some increased forty percent. So, you know, food for thought.
Correct. So we also want, you know, we don't, we obviously take all tax increases seriously and understand the impacts it has on households and businesses. So I do want to illustrate the impact of the one percent property tax increase. So this slide's a little bit different. It's just looking at a two thousand four home valued at five hundred thousand dollars, basically side by side. The only difference between the top and bottom calculations is that general levy. So the, the top portion of the slide is the two thousand twenty four projected levy with the one percent, so about a seventy two cent per thousand levy rate. The bottom half of the slide is the two thousand twenty four levy if we did not take the one percent authorized increase. And you see that levy rate is lower. It's just under seventy two cents. So you, you have about a three dollar and forty eight cent impact to a five hundred thousand dollar home because of that one percent increase. So that is property tax and what we would, what is included in the two thousand twenty four budget. I would like to cover, you know, several other areas of our revenues within the budget. Sales tax, our projection is about seventeen point one million dollars. This is about a one point two million dollar increase compared to the adopted two thousand twenty three budget. This is just under twenty percent of all general fund revenues. I will say this increase is really not a statement about sales, retail sales increasing at that amount. This is really catching up what we're seeing in reality to the projections. So it's, really, we're thinking that next year's sales taxes are going to be pretty flatlined in terms of, in terms of growth. So again, this is really just catching up what we're seeing in our actual trends versus the budget. I'm looking at property tax kind of from a broader scale. If you look at the last twelve months, the, with the most current sales tax information, and that is from August of this year. Overall retail trade is down three point eight percent. Construction is up one point five percent. I will note that in retail trade, we had a very significant one-time tax payment in two thousand twenty two, which is really changing these numbers. So if you take out that one-time impact from two thousand twenty two, retail trade grew in the last twelve months about a half a percent. So that it was a definite significant impact. But still, if you look at that one percent in retail trade, which is our largest, covers our largest categories in sales tax, that's below inflation. So the theory is that while we're keeping pace dollar wise, the actual volume of sales is likely declined this year. I'm looking at the same information just year to date, so that would only cover the first eight months of two thousand twenty three, very similar numbers. Retail trade is down about four point five percent and construction is up one point three percent. Again, if you take out that one-time impact from two thousand twenty two in retail trade, it's, I think it's about a point six percent increase, I'm looking at this period. You saw this slide in the city manager's presentation from two weeks ago. But it's, you know, it's, I think it's really telling what has happened here recently, and I think we've, well, I for one, was very surprised to see what sales tax did throughout the pandemic. Two thousand twenty, of course, we were feeling pretty optimistic about the economy. Of course, COVID occurred and started in March. We all projected that there was going to be a very big decline to economic activity throughout the country. That certainly wasn't the case in our local area. We talked a lot about the nature of Lacey's sales tax. We don't have what I would call a lot of the kind of discretionary type spending. We don't have a mall. We don't have a large auto dealerships. So what we sell is, is big box type of durable goods. That demand typically doesn't change within economic cycles. But nonetheless, we expected a pretty big decline in two thousand twenty. We took a mid-year action to actually decrease the projection within our budget. We were, at that time, I believe, we were thinking we would see sales tax reduced by about a third. So that's what you're seeing there in the two thousand twenty adjustment. And of course, you could see what has happened since that time in, in terms of our, our budget. There's a lot of theories as to what happened in terms of our local economy, I think. For one, I think the fact that we have shifted to working at home. In fact, many people went home to work a hundred percent of the time. Of course, I think many places have gone, are gone back to a hybrid model. But when people don't leave the community, they keep their money here. They eat at our restaurants. They shop here. So we just think that those, that leakage didn't occur during that period. I think that's continuing today. There are millions and millions of dollars of stimulus money that's within this period as well. So while our crystal ball wasn't very clear in two thousand twenty, I think it's a little more clear as we look back as to, to what occurred. This is the total retail sales tax over the last five years. You could again see that growth, the two thousand nineteen, which is the only pre-pandemic year shown here, it's in that lighter kind of grayish blue color. But you could see every year's increase since that time. Again, you could see the, if you look at the two thousand twenty two in red, you could see that spike in June. That is that impact of that one-time tax payment. I think we discussed during the budget workshop, what happens in June and July in terms of overall sales and kind of the explanation as to why that goes up. My answer unfortunately is still the same. I don't know. I've actually looked at the details. There's no clear explanation as to what's happening. I looked at, across many categories, and it's kind of across the board. You see an increase of sales in that April, May time period. Just doesn't, there's nothing like holiday sales. There's no back-to-school sales at that time. I, maybe it's just going into the summer as the weather starts to clear up, people get out of the house a little bit more and start to spend a little bit of money. So I wish I had a better explanation of that, but yeah, we do see that, that little uptick there in that June-July period. I'm looking at the, you know, really fine details. I apologize for the size of the, the print here. But these are the top twenty sources of sales tax for the city of Lacey. This is the most recent information, which again is the sales that took place in August. Are far and away our largest category is general merchandise stores. We are about one point six million, one point six percent higher than last year. Again, kind of the same comment. We're really staying pace in terms of dollars, but because of inflation, and we think the overall volume has decreased. The inflation rate for the Seattle area during this August period was still over five percent. Sporting goods, hobbies, musical instruments, bookstores, you see a decrease of fourteen point two percent. This is the category that that one-time sales occurred. If you take out that amount out of the two thousand twenty two column, you end up with about a five percent increase actually within this category. This is also the category where you see the most online retail sales. Construction of buildings through August is down about one point nine percent, very close to last year. This is what I would consider an elevated amount in terms of construction activity. This is mostly driven by the multifamily development, a little bit of retail and industrial developments out in northeast Lacey. The final category I'd like to point out is food services, drinking places. This is restaurants. We're seeing a nine point four percent increase year to date. If you think about the, the, the impacts of the safety regulations that happened throughout the pandemic, this is one of the hardest hit industries, I think, that we have here in Lacey. So I think this is very representative of a fully opened economy in terms of safety measures, in terms of what we're looking at out there in the public. So looking at the top five, oops, categories, basically combining a lot of those other categories. We have about a hundred different categories than sales tax, so this combines them into more broad categories. Again, you see the retail trade, a decrease, a year to date of four point five percent, construction up one point three percent. Accommodation and food services up eight point nine percent. I think we've heard this pretty much across the nation in terms of hospitality, restaurants, those industries are really making a comeback. Wholesale trade up eighteen point five percent. This wholesale trade category is primarily the impacted development. So when you have a development, you have computer systems, you have HVAC systems that get installed into these new buildings. The fall generally falls under this category. So just the function of that development and construction we're seeing being elevated is, is elevating this category as well. Administrative and support services of about two point three percent. I think the most common activity within this category is landscaping, home alarms, streaming services, I believe, is also within this category. So, you know, here it's very similar to what you're seeing in the retail trade. I think we're actually falling behind in volume. But also kind of makes sense, I think, when you think about our shift to multifamily development and shifting away from single homes. You're just not seeing the same type of investment and increased spending that goes along with that. I showed this slide during the budget workshop, but I think it's a, you know, pretty compelling slide when you look at this. So this is the two thousand twenty two sales tax numbers, and I have the data for all two hundred and eighty one cities. But what I like to look at is sales tax on a per capita basis. So these are your top three cities in terms of sales tax generation per capita. And then you see our, our neighboring cities as well as ourselves. We are the hundred and third ranked city in terms of per capita generation. But we are the twenty three, twenty-third largest city in the state. So I mean, I think that's a really telling fact. If you look at the two thousand twenty one results, so you see that here in red, we actually lost quite a few spaces in terms of the ranking on per capita sales tax generation. In fact, we actually fell behind Yelm in terms of that per capita sales tax generation. So looking at utility taxes, this is a significant source of revenue for the general fund. And we have an overall decrease of about three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars projected for two thousand twenty four. Lacey-owned utilities, this is water, wastewater and stormwater. We're projecting about a three hundred and twenty two thousand dollar increase. This is primarily on projected rate increases as well as just overall growth to the city. Electricity, we're projecting a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollar increase, natural gas, just under a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. Telephone, we're projecting about a seventy five thousand dollar decrease. We've talked quite a bit about this over the years in terms of what's happening to landline phones and the shift to mobile phones. Mobile phones, we are not allowed to tax for the most part. There is a a federal prohibition on levying utility tax on data. And if you think about the way we use our mobile phones, it's primarily data and not voice. The, the, the main reason we're seeing a decrease in the projections is we would like to propose to the city council to rescind a six point zero four percent utility tax on water activities, and this relates to fire protection activities. So this is a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease. We do have a series of slides that will help explain why we want to have this rescinded and how we got here. So again, we would like to propose to the council that in two thousand twenty four, we do rescind this, I'll call it a special utility tax. This is the only utility that pays, that we levy any more than six percent. So this action goes back to a Supreme Court case. It was Lane versus Seattle, and this was a case that had to do with the cost of providing fire flow, fire hydrant maintenance. And up until two thousand eight, nearly every water purveyor paid for the maintenance of fire hydrants, fire lines, any upsizing that was related to fire protection. I think every one of our reservoirs has a certain portion built in for fire protection. So those were just generally considered water costs. So this case changed all of that. So in two thousand and eight, the Supreme Court stated that anything related to hydrant maintenance or any other fire suppression costs were the responsibility of general government and not the water utility, which really meant that general government needed to start paying for these costs. So in two thousand and twelve, Lacey engaged a consultant to develop a cost allocation plan for these costs. This was, you know, something that the state auditor recognized in terms of significant change and lack of ability to pay by many general funds across the state. So they gave a lot of leeway in terms of trying to solve this financial problem. But in two thousand and twelve, we, we, like I said, engaged a consultant to look at what those costs were. So in two thousand and twelve, it was determined that five hundred and four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars of the water fund budget went to maintaining and operating these very activities. So when we looked at the water utility at that time, that, this consisted of about five point seven percent of all expenditures. So what we did in terms of taking action, we first levied this new, at the time, it was a new utility tax of six point zero four percent only on water activities. This generated that exact dollar amount, five hundred and four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. So we collected that within a general fund, and we basically made payment to the water fund using these taxes. When you really look at that, there was no impact on the water utility itself. This was perfectly allowable under that Supreme Court decision, so that's why we took that action. To make sure that the, you know, the water fund was basically not collecting these twice, we lowered the water rates by a similar amount. Before I make further comments, Councilman Vasquez.
So there was a lawsuit because you were not supposed to use water utility funds to pay for the maintenance of the hydrants. So you created a different water utility tax to set aside money to pay for the maintenance? Can you explain that differently?
Maybe I'll explain it backwards.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So the second action the city council took was to decrease the water rate. The overall collections by that same amount, five hundred and four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. That equated to a five point three nine percent decrease of the water rates. So we decreased water rates by that amount. Therefore, we weren't collecting those revenues. But the water fund was still bearing the cost of the maintenance of the hydrants and water lines. So in order to pay for that, we wanted to pay for that out of general revenues, so we levied this tax to generate the amount needed for that. So we levied this new tax of six point zero four percent, which again generated that exact dollar amount. So we generated a new tax or a new revenue source through this tax. And then we made payment from the general government to the water fund in the amount of five hundred and four thousand dollars. which paid for those services that were still being incurred by the the water utility.
I think I got it. Thanks.
The difference, in case you didn't, the the tax, the utility tax goes to general fund as opposed to the water rate which goes to water. That's how you were able to move that money to make it a general fund expense instead of a water expense, because it was then general fund money because it was a tax. Make sense?
And I have another illustration. I will hopefully make it even a little more clear. I completely realize how confusing this can be. So in, of course, the city council took action at that time in two thousand and twelve. This was all effective January first, two thousand thirteen. The state legislature came to the conclusion in the very next session that no, this indeed can be borne by the water utilities. This is just a normal function of water utilities. So they passed substitute House Bill fifteen twelve that basically said, no, this is okay. You water utilities can indeed pay for this. So you see the RCW that impacted, and it says a water purveyor may allocate and recover the cost of fire suppression water facilities from services from all customers. So basically, null and voided the Supreme Court decision. We did not take action on that to reverse that because we had adopted a multi-year water rate and decided things were confusing enough, we would just, you know, stay the status quo. But for this, you know, at this point, we think we'd like to clean that up. We are going to ask the council to consider another multi-year rate ordinance, and I think it's time to at least consider that. So here we are ten years later, looking at fixing that and coming into compliance with state law. But again, we're not violating anything currently. So the approach we took in two thousand and twelve for two thousand thirteen was to have zero impact on the water customer, and I would very much like to propose the same thing in two thousand twenty-four. So I'll walk you through the calculations that I hope will hopefully make this a little more clear as as we move forward. So what you're seeing here on the screen is the current today's water bill. If a residential customer used seven hundred cubic feet in any given month, this is what they would pay. So you have the the base rate of nineteen dollars and thirty-three cents, the volumetric charge of thirteen dollars and forty-three cents, for a total water charge of thirty-two seventy-six. You apply, first we apply the normal, the standard six percent utility tax, which is a dollar ninety-seven. Then we apply the six point zero four percent utility tax on water itself. That's a dollar ninety-eight. So today, if this is what a water customer used in terms of water, they would pay the city thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Troy?
Yes.
Isn't it true that the state legislature mandates these unfunded regulations? And and we either bear the cost or they give us a tool to tax. That's our only two options to pay for it, right?
Yes, that's true. I don't know. This is quite the same. I think the legislative action was just recognizing past practice for a hundred years or however long utilities and water purveyors have been charging water.
Yeah, but it but it's their mandates for the fire suppression systems and all that other stuff that they mandate that we have to abide by. But then they don't give any funding source to pay for it, except for the RCW that says we can tax our customers, correct?
Fair enough. It's, yeah, it's a fee that we definitely pass on. It's a, you know, it's a cost that we have to bear. We have.
But I think it's important that our ratepayers understand that. It it makes us look bad as local officials that we're the taxing authority. But those revenues are taken from us or mandated without any funding source. And we either bear the cost or we have to tax, we could use one tool in our toolbox, and that's them giving us the authority to tax our ratepayers.
Sure, sure. So what we are proposing is to basically do the reverse of what we did in two thousand and thirteen. So we will increase water rates by nine hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That is the two thousand twenty-three estimated cost of fire protection services that are being provided by the water utility. This equates to a five point six nine eight one percent increase. So you could see it's an across-the-board five point six nine percent increase. So, you know, applying the same math, you end up with a total water charge of thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. We would apply the six percent utility tax, which is now two dollars and eight cents. There would be no additional six point zero four percent utility tax going forward, and this would add up to thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. So again, we would increase or propose to increase rates by five point six nine percent. Rescind the six point zero four percent water utility tax for fire protection services. And you see the net zero impact to the customer.
This slide is a thing of beauty, Troy.
It really is some awesome math and fun numbers. When you say across the board, we're talking about residential as well as commercial?
It is. So it's over the two different groups, in-city, outside-city. I did the math on all customer classes and came to the penny on every single classification. So I feel pretty confident that in terms of the the rate change and the elimination of the utility tax, it will be at a net zero impact. So in terms of actions that we would like to propose the council consider, again, increase the water rates by that five point six nine percent as authorized by the RCW. And then in the same evening, we would rescind the six point zero four percent utility tax on water utilities or water activities. And this is, you could see the LMC chapter three point zero one point zero four zero. It would just simply strike the water section, which is states that the water utility taxes twelve point zero four percent. So all utilities would be six percent. So other taxes, business and occupation tax for the general fund. The projection is about three point five million dollars. We're really seeing kind of the same trends we're seeing with sales tax. I mean, they do follow roughly the same basis. So again, this is a, it is an increase, but it's really more of an adjustment at looking at the current trend and adjusting the budget, not necessarily an indication that activity is increasing. Admissions tax, we're projecting a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to two thousand twenty-four, slight increase of twelve thousand. This is an interesting area in terms of changes we we think are probably permanent in terms of pandemic behavior. Pre-pandemic, we were collecting about two hundred and fifty thousand per year. I just think things have changed. I think there's technological changes as well. On my, in my personal life, I stream more movies and I watch at a movie theater now, just the fact that the movies come out so quickly and sometimes new releases come out streaming. So so for for my household, that form of entertainment comes in the form of streaming, which unfortunately takes away from admissions tax. Gambling taxes, we're projecting an increase of about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for a total of about five, five hundred forty-one thousand. This is an increase compared to the pre-pandemic levels. Fees and other revenues, we did.
If I may?
Yes.
It's true that the gambling tax, right, the the owners used to be local and now they've sold. And so now that ownership isn't local anymore. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case.
Okay, I'm gonna bring that up later, just so everybody knows.
Fees and other revenues, you know, a question came up a couple of weeks ago about parks and recreation fees, so I thought I'd provide a little more detail. We're projecting about eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in parks and rec fees, field use rental, that type of thing. You know, this is down a little bit compared to what we projected for two thousand twenty-three. You could see here, you know, just kind of looking at the trends through September two thousand twenty-three. We've collected about five hundred and sixty-five thousand so far. Last year, we collected about five hundred and fifty-five thousand. Two thousand nineteen, we collected seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, you know, we are not quite fully recovered in this category. But, you know, we've also had some changes to our offerings as well. So those have, those have declined a little bit too. But we're getting, we're getting closer to those pre-pandemic levels. Another area within other revenues and fees and investment income. The projection is about one point six million dollars for two thousand twenty-four. This is essentially double from what we projected in two thousand twenty-three. This is really what we're seeing in interest rates. The Federal Reserve is we've seen a very steep increase to those interest rates, which impacts everything kind of downstream. So we are projecting quite a, quite an increase in investment income. Looking at all revenues, this is that category that we're seeing the most significant change. Overall, about an eight point two percent or eight point two million dollar increase. The majority of this is coming from the use of one-time reserves, just over, almost eight point one million dollars of additional reserves being used this year. Transfers, we're seeing a decrease of about two hundred and ten thousand. And again, the interest, investment interest income going up about almost seven hundred thousand. So looking at the use of reserves, we are using quite a bit in terms of one-time reserves for those one-time projects. But that really falls in line with our policies. We do try to use one-time reserves for one-time only uses. We don't want to, we try to avoid using one-time source of revenue for ongoing costs. So this really does fit with our philosophy and our approach. So in two thousand twenty-four, we're going to use about seventeen point five million dollars in reserves for the police station. Five point three million for the phase one A of Great Kew Park. I'm using just under five hundred thousand dollars for an upgrade or a switch in our police records management system. And we're going to use about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for economic development investments. We are indeed using some reserves for ongoing operations and maintenance, about one point eight million dollars. We've talked about this in several different occasions. We are using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves to fund five police positions. This is part of our succession planning going forward. I think we've all recognized too, the need of personnel and additional personnel in police. So we do need to address this and find a way to, you know, give more resources to police. We are using about three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in a budget policy reserve. This is a three million dollar reserve that the council established a few years ago for this very purpose, really just to kind of get us through the ebbs and flows of economic cycles. We've also talked about the rapid response team and the mobile outreach team in terms of using reserves to pay for those as well. But again, we think those are long-term services and not short-term services. So again, we're going to have to address that. And then we have the last of the general fund reserve for two hundred thousand dollars for the subsidy of the rack. We are going to be shifting, I think, for five years and using the public facility district reserves for this same purpose. But this will be the last year of the general fund support to that. So again, we're using about one point eight million dollars in reserves for ongoing operations. We've also talked about next year's council retreat, focusing on this very issue. Looking at our resources in terms of what we need for personnel, looking at priorities of the council, looking at our facility needs and having that discussion in terms of how we're going to fund those and how we're going to prioritize that. So we definitely have the reserves to cover these uses, but it's going to be a very timely conversation, I think, early next year, and certainly look forward to that. Just kind of overall comments about the general fund revenue considerations. This is almost a snapshot of exactly what I said last year. But here we are again. I don't think much has changed. We're still looking at a planned economic slowdown by the Federal Reserve. They did not act this week in terms of increasing the overnight rate, but they also acknowledged that they will act appropriately at their last meeting if the the numbers show that inflation isn't coming down, if workforce issues have not come in alignment with what they think it should be for a healthy economy. So but they're also, you know, they double down on the fact that they need to keep rates higher to control these economic forces. So we are still in the mode of an economic slowdown and one that is purposeful.
The bond market did rise a hundred basis points in two days.
I did.
So that was awesome.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it's overall positive news, but the fact of the matter is inflation is still higher than our target. There's still challenges within the workforce. There are still supply chain issues out there. So, you know, that's certainly something we thought about in terms of those revenue projections. In terms of revenue outlook, I am not an economist, but I do have an opinion. But, you know, the, you know, when we look at the overall economic slowdown, you know, we've heard a lot of discussion about the soft landing, and the soft landing would be that the slowdown will not put the nation into a recession. I think most economists are very positive about the fact we may not have that recession, but there are still impacts to the economy, and we're, we are seeing that. So you know, that's something we'll watch. The other thing, you know, speaking of those interest rates, I wonder how those interest rates are going to, and have they in fact already impacted development and expansion? I don't, it's at some point going to have an impact. We're already seeing that in the the housing market. We're seeing interest rates we haven't seen in thirty years. And I think there's definitely been a slowdown in that, in that area of the economy. So do you want to talk about some of the other revenue sources? Real estate excise taxes, we receive these into our Artura Street Fund. The projection is two point five million dollars. This is, this is an area that we're actually seeing that slowdown in real estate activity. This two point five million dollars is over, you know, half of what we saw even two years ago. So we're definitely seeing a decrease within this area. This is also the source of revenues that we're going to use for the debt financing for the new police station. Using a five percent interest rate for about seventeen point eight, seventeen point five million dollars of bonds in two thousand twenty-five. That's going to be about one point five million dollars per year in in debt service, and that's going to come from this source.
Have to build some new houses.
I'm sorry?
So we're gonna have to build some more houses.
Build and sell more houses or other real estate, definitely. Motor vehicle fuel tax, we're projecting about a thirty-five thousand dollar decrease. This is a state shared revenue comes to us on a per capita basis. The fuel tax itself is levied on a per gallon basis. So this is really an indication that either that less fuel is being used statewide. You think about electric vehicles, you think about higher miles per gallons in terms of vehicles, you think about the impact that the hybrid work environment has had in this area. So seeing slight decrease in this area. Transportation Benefit District, this is a voter-approved, two tenths of one percent sales tax restricted for the preservation, the maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks. Our projection for next year is about three point seven million dollars. So looking at utility rates, we are going to be presenting to the council multi-year rate increases two weeks from today. So the water increase using that five point six nine percent increase and then the five point two five percent increase about a hundred, a dollar eighty-two per month for that seven hundred cubic feet of use for a residential customer. The proposal is five point two five percent increases for the years two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-seven. This is consistent with what is in the draft water comp plan, which is on its way to the Department of Health for approval.
Is that seven hundred cubic?
Is that seven hundred cubic feet water? Is that just the middle? Is that pretty average for a household in Lacey?
Think that's pretty average. I think Peter Brooks said recently it might be about six hundred, but six to seven hundred. You'll often see nine hundred cubic feet used. I'll switch back and forth depending on the audience. The nine hundred cubic feet comes from the lot equivalent residential unit. That's nine hundred cubic feet. So, you know, depending on what information we're presenting, you know, for consistency's sake, we may use nine hundred cubic feet. But I think seven hundred is closer to the actual use. For sewer, it is a nine point five percent increase. This is a two dollar and sixty-two cent. A monthly increase for our residential customers. We are just now starting the comp plan update from, I think, two thousand fifteen, might be two thousand thirteen. But we did undergo a two thousand twenty-one rate study that indicated that nine point five percent was needed throughout that period. Stormwater increase is four point five percent. This is about sixty-one cents per month increase. And this will cover the years two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. This is also consistent with the adopted stormwater comp plan. And then there is a three percent lot increase, which is a dollar thirty-four for the equivalent residential unit. So I do want to kind of revisit what actions were taken in two thousand twenty-one. I think it very much informs the future. In two thousand twenty-one, of course, we were right in the middle of the pandemic. We still had a lot of concerns about the economy. So in two thousand twenty, the council paused rate increases for the utilities with the exception of stormwater, since we had an adopted comp plan. So what the council did is they adopted a mid-year five percent. Rate increase for water and sewer to give us really a chance to take a look at kind of the the big picture for these two utilities. So that's precisely what we did. We got some pretty big policy direction from the council at this time. You know, and the first was. To. Include in the comp plans what we called the full construction or capital improvement program. And what that meant was the council's commitment to addressing the septic to sewer conversions in the long term. So what what these rates do include is the full. The full payment for those conversions over. You know, probably a three decade period. I can't remember exactly how long, but it was a two point five million dollar per year commitment by the city council. To address the septic issue in our area. So then that breakout was a million dollars a year from water and two point five million dollars a year from the sewer utility. Of course, we converted several septic tanks in the Capital City area. Which that was about a seventeen million, sixteen million dollar estimate, which is really going to take the first eight years of that program. So we're not actively converting septic tanks, but I did want to remind. You know, the public and the council about that commitment, and that's included what's in these rate increases going forward. Also want to point out the debt within those rate studies. What you're seeing on the screen there is what was projected in those rate studies. So those rate studies actually projected that we would be issuing debt for water and sewer this year. We had some project delays, supply chain issues, workforce issues. So that debt at this point is being budgeted for next year. So we have ten million dollars budgeted within the water fund, and that's coming in the form of Public Works Board loans. This is a really nice program for us. It's a lower than market rate. Interest rate. There's far less staff time that goes into issuing that type of debt versus going out to the open market for that debt. So it's it's a, like I said, a really nice opportunity for the city. In the wastewater fund, that five point two five million dollars we're projecting at this point in two thousand twenty-four. That's really going to depend what actually we're able to build and construct in two thousand twenty-four. But in terms of the budget balancing effort, we do need this five point two five million dollars of debt to balance that budget. Another kind of major consideration for the council we'd like to present is. How the LMC addresses capital replacement and repair. So in looking at the LMC in in both water and the sewer chapters. These chapters actually have very specific requirements for the funding of capital for these two utilities. So the water chapter states that fifteen percent of the water service charges. Are to be set aside for capital purposes, and we do indeed do that. We take fifteen percent of those service charges and we directly receive them into our capital fund. The sewer chapter has similar language, but it's not quite as precise. But it states that a portion of the basic service charge for sewer will go towards the replacement and rebuilding of sewer facilities. By policy and budget adoption, we are currently receiving two dollars and twenty-five cents. Of the basic fee indirectly into the sewer capital fund. This, while we're meeting the intent of the law and intent of the council to have the, you know, the foresight and providing funding for those needed capital improvements and replacements. This doesn't match our practice. We are actually dedicating more than both of these amounts towards capital. We have basically adopted the process of meeting all of our operating and maintenance needs, our debt needs, our minimum. Reserve amounts, and we take whatever's remaining and we transfer that amount into capital. So we are far exceeding this, and so we would like to suggest that we adopt more generic. Language in all three. So currently, there is no such requirement in stormwater, but we would like. Some consistency and again, some more generic language. So what you're seeing on screen is what we would propose for that language, and it basically states. What we're doing in practice. So the service charges will first go to the purpose of the cost to maintain and operate the utilities. Meeting the meeting the minimum debt requirements and also meeting our own adopted policies for a minimum. Operation reserve thresholds, and then any balance of revenues thereafter will be used for the replacement and. Repair and expansion of capital facilities. So, you know, if the council's in favor of that, we would like to present that as well as part of the two thousand twenty-four consideration for rates. So next steps. November sixteenth will be another busy night for myself and as you as well. We will hope to present the two actions related to property taxes. One will be an authorizing resolution that will authorize the one percent increase. Adoption of the property tax levy ordinance, rescind the water fire protection utility tax as six point zero four percent. And then consider and adopt three utility rate ordinances for water, sewer, and stormwater. So that is your. Revenue comments for two thousand twenty-four. I'd be glad to take any questions, take any guidance from the council. And of course, any comment from the public or any questions the public might have.
So any any questions from the from the council on this at all? I I'm glad we're going to be bringing new stormwater language. That should be. At this time. Is there anyone in the in the audience who is wanting to comment or testify on anything being said in this hearing? I didn't see anyone sign up for for public comment on this section of the of the agenda. So, but I do want to ask if there's anybody who's interested in commenting on the budget presentation as presented. Okay, well, seeing none, then. Is there anybody online who would might want to comment, Assistant City Manager or Mr. Clerk? Okay. Okay, well, then if there is no objection, then I will. Please.
So. You asked for counsel. Right there, two cents or whatever.
I did. I didn't see any hands, but I wasn't looking at the screen, so I apologize if I missed you.
Yeah, I'm just leaning towards not supporting the one percent and looking at repealing the the gambling tax from. It's seven percent, I believe, and it used to be ten percent. And I would be more in favor of lifting that back up to the original ten percent and. Not doing the one percent property tax, but that's just the way I'm leaning. I want you guys to know. And take action later date maybe.
Okay, so if if we were to increase three percent, I guess that would.
I guess I would. I believe the current rate is seven point five percent.
So two and a half points.
Be trying to do quick math in my head.
Same here.
I think that sort of that would be a thirty-three percent increase. That's probably a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year.
As compared to eighty-eight thousand, right?
Correct.
So to me, that's a win, and it alleviates some tax burden that we're putting on. Our utility ratepayers, our residents, you know, all all we do every year is increase, increase, increase. And we finally have. An opportunity where it makes more sense to do it this way and save some, even if it's just a small burden of a tax burden. That that we do it.
I think the last time we reviewed this particular one percent, it came out to about twenty-five cents per house per month, somewhere in that ballpark.
Credits three dollars and sixty cents per year, so yeah, thirty cents.
Yeah, thirty cents. Thirty percent per house or.
I have a question.
Percent for the five sixty-two.
Troy, some sources of revenue are more elastic than others, so property tax fairly stable. How does the gambling tax compare? Because I'm guessing since it's more discretionary, if we increase taxes, might we see a decrease in participation?
It's my fear too.
Well, it's, well, first, yes, property taxes are most stable form of former revenues. You know, in terms of gambling tax, it's it's a tax on the business itself, so it's not passed on to the consumer. So it it doesn't really impact the consumer activity. So it's more of a, you know, what is going on in the economy? I mean, a lot of that is discretionary funds in terms of.
And it's usually about four hundred and fifty thousand annually, right?
Give or take, yes.
Yeah, and, you know, I think the increase itself is substantial enough to where we can just for once not use the. One percent thing. We we always consider it every year. We never do it. We always increase it. I think this is our opportunity because the pencil's out.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Just just one point on that. Keep in mind that the reason that it was lower to seven and a half from ten was because the business owner at that time. Was seriously considering leaving the city of Lacey because of the tax rate. So I want to make sure of that.
And that was, that was, you know, the two. Yeah, that was right after the recession, so they're recovering from that. So it's not a recession anymore. I think any way we can alleviate some tax burden, even if it's as little as the one percent, that we do it. Because we'll probably, if we don't do it now, we never will.
I think this would probably be a good piece of subject matter for next week's work session, if at all possible. I know that's that's short notice to to put any kind of numbers together. But if if we could compare just the two and a half percent to the thirty cents per household and see where that puts us maybe. And and we can revisit that that discussion in a week or so. I don't know if that's even a possibility, but I'm just kind of thinking that maybe that could happen if the those numbers could be crunching. And it appears the city manager has something to say about that, too.
That's why I brought it up, so we can have a little thing.
Deputy Mayor, if I may.
Please.
It's an intriguing notion that Councilmember Stedman has brought up. I think the timing is kind of interesting that we had our tribal representation here at the meeting earlier tonight. And this is gonna, this would directly impact them, I assume.
Well, they're. We don't.
It's totally different.
Okay.
These are, this is non-tribal tax dollars.
Okay, thank you. My mistake.
Currently in Lacey, there is only one establishment, and that is, I don't remember the name of it, but it's.
Fortune.
Golden something.
Play over in that area.
Formerly known as Hoxbury Casino, now known as Fortune Casino, because it changed hands.
Obviously, none of you guys go there.
My mistake.
And I'm I'm gonna look at Finance Director Troy Wu. But we could look at having this as a topic at next week's work session. We do have a full agenda for next week. Or we can look at it as part of the council meeting on the sixteenth to have a little deeper conversation. But I want to look at Troy for timing and what that looks like in terms of ultimately getting to the hearing process and on to budget adoption in December.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, the crunching numbers will be pretty straightforward, so I mean, we could have that discussion as early as next week. I would actually propose that the council separate the two issues. I mean, they're really, we're talking about two separate taxes. So, you know, if the council does want to provide some sort of tax relief of the one percent, that would be one conversation. You know, anytime we make a tax change, you know, I would certainly encourage, you know, we open it to a broader discussion. Certainly have more of a, give the, you know, the public more of a chance to have that discussion. You know, this could easily fit into that retreat. Don't want to speak for the city manager because we might end up having a six-day retreat by the time we're done. But, I mean, we are going to be talking about trying to fund many, many priorities that I don't. We're not going to have all the money to, you know, that this happens every year with our budget, and that's going to happen the same thing with all of our priorities. It doesn't mean some are more important than others, but we are going to have more priorities than money to pay for it. And this might be a better fit for that timeframe in terms of having that discussion. So the council could see the entire picture of all the parties and all the funding sources and the potential. Enhancements to revenues if those parties warrant that. So I think it it might be a better approach to look at this holistically versus versus one issue.
Again, if I may add, this isn't their only casino. They have several of them. One just happens to be in Hoxbury. That this elimination, this, you know. On the ten percent is. So. Just spoof a thought. I think now is the time.
It is definitely worth some future discussion, and I would I would certainly like to see it on on, you know, a work session agenda sometime in the near future. I just. It it it's not something we can take lightly and and just make a decision on. But you you definitely bring something to the table that we, you know, hadn't thought of in the past. So so thank you for your comment there. And is there anyone else wishing to address this council about this budget tonight? Troy.
One last, Mayor. You know, we should we should consider looking at Renton and Tuck Willa, where they have the other casinos and see what those cities charge them for their tax. And I'll let it rest after that.
Thank you. Please. I just want to make sure that we have clear direction on next action. So if we do, you know, defer the gambling tax discussion to the future. Does the council want to discuss the one percent consideration next week at the work session?
For the sixteenth, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, but.
We were all prepared, I believe, to to accept the one percent on the sixteenth. Maybe with one exception or two. I can't I can't speak for the mayor as he's not here. But I I do want to, I would like to see what those numbers look like, but I am not prepared to change what I've seen in the budget tonight.
Well, I mean, for the record, we're money ahead if we are to not do the one percent and re raise the seven to ten percent for the gambler. It's a win for a person, it's a win for a budget.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council about the budget as it's been presented tonight? Okay. Okay, seeing none, then I will officially call this public hearing closed. Report, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Rick Walk.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have a couple items on tonight's city manager report. The first is our annual review of property retained by the police department for 2023. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Almata to provide the overview.
Uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. I have a pretty light lift this evening. There's no changes to the retained property from last year. It's, uh, still 17 items that were, uh, retained through 2006 to, uh, 2022. Uh, there's 17 items. They're the same ones you saw last year, so there's, uh, if there's any questions, if you have to answer those questions.
Are you, are you, are you telling me that we've been sitting on these same 17 items, which it seems a little-
They're still serving their purpose.
And we're a little heavy on bolt cutters, I noticed, and-
We come across a lot of locks.
Okay.
Chain links and things.
It does not require any action.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, G. All right.
So next under the city manager report is we have a, um, a modification to an existing ILA. The ILA is, uh, originally established the, uh, capital area regional, uh, public facilities district. This is the public facilities district that helps overseas with the, uh, city of Lacey's regional athletic complex, as well as the hands-on children museum in the city of Olympia. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Schneider, our city attorney, to kind of go through what the modifications are being proposed tonight.
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. As Rick mentioned, in 2002, the public facility district was created by interlocal agreement between Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, and Thurston County. The, uh, the two regional centers created through that interlocal agreement, as it's been subsequently amended, are the regional athletic center in Lacey and the hands-on children museum. So in 2017, the legislature amended the RCWs which authorize sales and use tax for public facilities districts. The, uh, legislation extended the time that the tax could be imposed from what was previously a 25-year period. It extended it to a 40-year period. That time period, uh, is triggered when, from when the tax is initially collected. So, uh, the tax currently is set to expire in 2028. Um, the proposed modification to the interlocal agreement that's before this council tonight would incorporate the legislative changes and thus authorize the tax until 2043. The, uh, 15-year extension would provide for additional capital investment opportunities and expansion of the regional athletic center, and given that we do use some of the funds for operation and maintenance, it would help ensure the RAC's long-term viability. Um, the recommendation from staff, of course, council does not have to take any action. Um, but the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the modification, um, to the amended interlocal agreement regarding the creation of the public facilities districts. I will state that this action has already gone through Olympia, and the Olympia City Council has approved it. Um, Tom Water and Thurston County, um, are going to be considering it forthcoming months.
Comments, please, Councilmember Greenstein.
So for, for clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not actually an additional tax, right? This is just a redistribution of tax. So the state is already collecting this, and all that's happening is the state is giving back part of the state-collected sales tax to be used for this public facilities district, correct? It's not an additional tax on the public.
So as far as those kind of questions go, I'm going to defer to the Finance Director.
Sorry, I meant to ask you, Troy.
That is-
Me too, but I just wanted to make sure I'm right, because that's a big difference in adding a new tax or a tax that people are going to pay the way it just remove, it's changing how the money's used.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to comment on this, Troy?
I would just add that the, it is indeed a credit against the state portion, and that rate is 0.033%.
So in that, because of that, I will, um, make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the modification to Second Amendment to amended interlocal agreement regarding creation of a public facilities district, district for regional centers.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there questions? Councilmember Vasquez, did you have anything? I didn't want to-
A little curious about the phrasing of the recommended motion. Um, the modification to Second Amendment to amended interlocal agreement.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
That's a, that's a good question, council member. Um, and it's unique. This council usually sees, um, much simpler language. The history of the original interlocal agreement that was initially adopted in 2002, it's been amended three separate times, and each time it's been amended, there's been a different, um, there's been different language used. So the, uh, Olympia City Attorney actually drafted the, um, agreement that you're looking at, and and the other jurisdictions along, amongst myself all, you know, commented on it. And that was one of the questions I had is why are we using, and anyways, the rate, what we're doing is we're just modifying, um, the overall, um, context of all of the agreements, um, to incorporate the legislative changes. So although it's cumbersome to say, it's the only time we're going to have to say it. And it achieves the purpose.
So it, it just kind of, so the, the state is already collecting this tax, and what they're saying is, hey, it's going to sunset soon. We would like to continue distributing it to you if you should choose as a council to continue receiving it. Yes. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Yeah, nay.
Okay.
I mean, not nay, but abstain.
Okay, uh, it looks as if that motion passes.
All right, I have one more item on the city manager report tonight, and this is kind of a, a, a nice item to be able to do. Um, yesterday at the, uh, Lacey South Sound Chamber luncheon, uh, they had their induction of new officers for the chamber, and they invited, uh, Chief Almata to swear the, those officers in, so that was a nice little ceremony. Also, Jeanette Seeler, um, Recreation Coordinator Supervisor for our Lacey Parks and Recreation and Culture Programs. Um, she was there to provide an overview of all the various activities and events that the, uh, you know, business in the community can sign up for and connect with the community during those, uh, community events. And then a bit of a surprise, but a, a great thing is they, the chamber also in their, uh, Business of the Month Award acknowledged, um, uh, Justin Beard, who is also a Recreation Supervisor with the city of Lacey. If you know Justin, he's the person you contact to schedule events, schedule facilities, all those different times, and they wanted to recognize uh, Justin for his customer service and knowledge and skill and abilities to help guide them through those logistics. And, um, and they just, you know, again, recognized him with the, uh, Chamber Business of the Month uh, for his efforts when they're work in holding their events at the city of Lacey facilities. I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, not only, uh, the Lacey Parks and Recreation and Culture Department, but also Justin Beard for his great service out there in the community, connecting people to the events that they want to hold in city of Lacey.
That, that really is awesome, because Justin does an amazing job. I've worked with him a bunch of times, and he is really good. So it's good that he's being recognized.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, next on our agenda is standing general committees. It looks like there's one, uh, for Finance and Economic Development Committee.
And I will, uh, give that report since the mayor is not here. Uh, we had a two, it, the meeting was on, uh, the 24th of October, and we had a two-item agenda. Uh, the first item was to look at the Business and Occupation Tax Model Ordinance, and staff presented a briefing on some amendments to the state business occupation, uh, model tax ordinance that we're going to look at adopting just to be in compliance and to stay, this, keep our language similar to theirs. Um, the second item has actually been covered already tonight by Troy. Uh, it was the water and wastewater capital replacement and repair funding to discuss, um, the way that money is moved into those capital funds, and Troy's already covered that tonight, so I won't cover it again. That is my report.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, next on our agenda is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. The mayor's not present, uh, with an excused absence, so we will move on to my reports. I just have one quick one for the, uh, Thurston County Economic Development, uh, Council, and, uh, basically our, our, our four-city economic development strategy, or, or also called SEDs, uh, was, was completed uh, and submitted to the Federal Economic Development Administration, uh, and it was accepted. So, um, we will be moving forward with uh, establishing the, uh, management structure. Uh, well, I guess before I continue, um, the, this, this document allows us to form an economic development district. We have not been part of any economic development district in, in, at all. Uh, and so all of this has been done without the aid of what a, an, a federal economic development district can do, uh, for your area. But now we will be a part of, um, an economic development, a federal economic development district, which means that we can apply for funds that we couldn't previously apply for. That's basically what this means. And so, uh, it will require the governor to sign off on it. Uh, it will require our governing board, uh, and the county commissioners have already provided, provided an approval statement. Uh, so we are well on our way to, um, being part of, for the first time, um, an economic development, a federal economic development district, which uh, is, is going to, I think it's really going to be a benefit to, to our, to our county. So, uh, next we have, uh, Councilmember Cox.
I have two reports. Excuse me, um, the LOT Clean Water Alliance Board met on October the 11th, and we are taking the first step toward our 2025, 2030 strategic plan. This will be a year-long process to develop key goals and initiatives. Um, we also contracted with an outfit called HDR to, uh, sample wastewater for PFOS and NDMA. These are both for, forever chemicals to, because we're anticipating that the state is going to require this, and we want to get a better sense of what's there now and prepare for anticipated requirements that we do that. Um, there's a collaborative plan in the works for sea level rise. LOT's share of that would be about $91,000. LOT, um, is joining a downtown improvement district by petition. Uh, this is private sector funding to improve the downtown area. Uh, the overall budget for this is $575,000. Excuse me, LOT would pay about $3,200 to that. So we figured that was a nice price. Um, we're in a, we'll be starting the second year of the budget, and there's no budget amendments needed for that. Uh, we also got an update on the Centrate Building Rehab project that's going out for bid. This building was constructed in the 50s, expanded in the 80s, and, um, it's still, you know, it just, you know, it's an old, older building that just needs lots of updates. Um, we also talked about, um, property updates. LOT is looking at selling off some of the property that they no longer see a business need for, and one of those includes some property here in Lacey. So we may be talking with them about that at some point. So that is the LOT report, and then the Regional Housing Council met on October 25th. Um, we heard from a woman named Victoria O'Bannon, who represents uh, an organization called Resident-Owned Communities Northwest, and she was seeking help for residents of a mobile home park in the county uh, to help purchase their park, which is estimated at eight to $10 million value. Um, her particular ask was to see if we could find a way to get better interest rates, like we can, we can get money from the state at like 2% with trust fund monies and stuff, whereas obviously the interest rates are much higher um, on the market, and this would mean, you know, a big deal. It could, it could really help the residents with anticipated um, raises in their, in their, um, monthly payments in order to pay off this thing. So we agreed to have her back at the next meeting to talk a little bit more about this, to see what, if any, role that the Regional Housing Council could have in this. The, um, the thing that, the reason I'm even mentioning this is that there, there is a movement to have resident-owned mobile home parks as a way of preserving these, and I think it's, it's a really important thing, because it's, it's one sector of affordable housing for communities. So um, I'm, I'm hoping that there may be something we can do on that. Um, we approved a proposal to create homeless services contract amendments between the county and 11 nonprofit organizations to distribute about $750,000 in consolidated homeless grant inflationary funds from the state. Uh, the money is intended to fill grants, grants left by a reduction in document recording fee revenues and the sunsetting of COVID-19 specific funds. Um, so we agreed to just sort of divide it amongst those organizations and require that they use the funds to prioritize salary increases or retention stipends for their homeless service provider workforce, and to the extent possible, offset other inflationary costs. So that was that. Um, we, we got a, um, report on a rental assistance survey that the county has just undertaken. Um, you may recall that over like the last three or four years, there's been a lot of money coming into Thurston County from state and federal sources to try to help, particularly during COVID, to try to help people who were, um, facing evictions to help them stay housed. And the purpose of this survey was to take a look at what's happened during this window of time and assess where we are now, because some of these funds may be going away and where the needs are. And they got about a 30% response rate, and some of it was pretty grim. I mean, there's some people who feel like they'll never be able to afford anything beyond where they are right now. And so it was, it was kind of a tough thing. Um, we also talked about a legislative agenda. Um, we, the Regional Housing Council doesn't have a lobbyist, and so the tech team put together a list of eight different, um, pieces that I'm gonna, I'll be sharing with Rick, and, you know, I don't suppose that, you know, all eight are going to end up in our city of Lacey legislative agenda, but there are things that we may want to take a look at, so I'll, I'll share it with all of you too. But one of them would be more permanent funding for rental assistance or a new permanent rule subsidy. Um, and then permanent operational funds for programs established and paid, paid for by the state's right-of-way funding. We've, you know, we've bought, we've built, and now we've got to figure out how to maintain and continue operating these things, and there, there are others as well. So that's the report on that.
So, does that conclude your reports?
Please, my reports.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one short report tonight. Um, Thurston 911 Communications met on, uh, November 1st, so yesterday. And, uh, pretty long meeting. A lot of it was housekeeping, uh, quite a few resolutions that we needed to deal with, but a couple of things that I want to bring to council and the public's attention. Uh, finally received the permit for the radio tower that I have talked about over the last year or so.
Wow.
Um, took one month short of three years to get that permit done with the county, but it's finally done, so that's really good news. Um, also, and some good news, the, the 2022, so there's a, an organization of TCOMs throughout the state and the nation, actually. Apconina is the organization that represents them. At their annual conference, a couple of months, a month ago now, I guess, uh, TCOM, Thurston TCOM, actually received two major awards. One was for the Telecommunicator of the Year. Christine Stewart, who's done just an amazing job at TCOM, got that award. And then they also received the award for, uh, the team award for a critical incident, and that was the, uh, a very large-scale incident that actually went over a couple of days, uh, in October of, of last year, of '22. Uh, and the team won that award. Angela Larson, who kind of was the key person at TCOM for that, uh, accepted that award for, for TCOM, so. And that, that is really, I think, all I need to report on for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stedman.
I have no report.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Conkle.
Thank you. So I have three quick reports. I'm gonna start with Jazzcom. We met on the 25th. That was a very brief meeting outlining our proposed 2024 budget. Uh, throughout the conversation, I did bring up the, um, idea of kicking the spurs to accomplishing a new facility plan. Uh, as most of you know, it is, um, idea of kicking the spurs to accomplishing a new facility plan. Uh, as most of you know, it is, um, the conditions are not acceptable in the current animal shelter. Apparently our staff is currently looking at publicly owned land in Thurston County that we could consider as a potential new site. And I'm looking forward to an upcoming report. Do we know when we're going to talk about that?
Don't have an ETA on that yet.
Yeah, yeah. No, you don't? Okay, thank you. And, uh, our official budget hearing for Jazzcom will be held on the 13th of November. And I have, oops, I backed up too far. There we go. So our, our VCB met, uh, October 10th, uh, for our, uh, works on the destination master plan. We currently have our consultant group in town, uh, for stakeholder and one-on-one focus groups. Uh, looking forward to hear more from our consultants down the road. Jeff Bo gave a very interesting presentation on the intricacies involving promoting local, uh, sports tourism. And essentially we got a peek behind the curtain and, uh, those are pretty much the highlights. There's some great metrics showing improvements to online and media presence, uh, for Experience Olympia and Beyond. And I will share those reports with the council. And then lastly, I keep hitting the wrong button here. Our SWAC met yesterday, had a brief meeting that covered our proposed budget for 2024. Uh, there will be some significant expenditures for capital improvements in the next few years, uh, but we do seem to be on track. We also reviewed our work plan for 2024, still building on it. And we have a new citizen rep who will be joining our board in January named Aaron Robertson. And there will be no SWAC meeting in December. That is my report.
Okay, sounds like capital improvements seem to be popping up all throughout the agenda. Councilmember Vasquez, sorry. Okay, I guess it's getting late.
Whoever I am. Yes, I have two quick reports. Uh, first report is for the Board of Health. During our last meeting, we talked about the fact that the Board of Health will be recruiting additional community members. So recent legislation that passed in 2022 legislative session, I think, expanded the Board of Health so that instead of just being made up of the county commissioners, there's actually citizen representation on the board and local jurisdiction representation, which I'm the person serving for Lacey. But because the county commission is growing, right, we're adding two additional representatives for the county commission. The representatives from the community have to exceed, like, they have to balance, basically. So we have to recruit two additional members of the community and one of our current members is leaving or has left. So they're recruiting three folks. So if anybody knows anybody who's interested in serving on the Thurston County Board of Health, have them check that out. Uh, it's been very educational for me. And the other thing we heard about from the Board of Health is just, they have, like us, they're talking about their budget for next year and they actually intend to expand the number of FTEs of positions across the board in public health. So the county is facing significant budget troubles, as many of us are aware. But public health receives funding from different sources than the county, including a lot of federal monies, federal grants. So they are, it looks like about a 20% increase in the number of FTEs across the different programs in public health. So it's a significant growth. But I'd say it's probably more like catch-up. You know, we've talked about how our staff for our city didn't really keep pace with the growth of the population in Lacey, especially during 2009, 10, 11, when we saw significant budget deficit across the state. I think public health is experiencing something similar where for a long time, they may not have grown, even though programs got more complex and the demands of the community got more complex. And then COVID happened and we all realized, oh, shucks, we've got some really thin areas in public health. And so they're planning on adding a number of positions across different, uh, programs in public health. More to come on that in the future. Inner City Transit met yesterday and two things that are before the public, in case folks are interested, the Inner City Transit draft budget is up for review and comment until December 6th and their capital improvement plan from, uh, 2024 through 2028 is also open for public comment. So if you have something to say about our excellent public transportation system, which is zero fare, go take a look. Their budget is open for comment. And the other exciting piece of news from Inner City Transit is that they've been seeking a general manager for the last several months because Anne Freeman-Monceneras used to be the general manager. She departed. And we've been in the process of recruiting and we announced, or rather, we authorized the board chair to enter negotiations with the board's preferred candidate, which is, um, Emily Bergkamp, who is the, previously the operations manager for Inner City Transit and has been serving as the interim. And it was a very competitive recruitment. I think 95 applicants from all over the United States, from rail, from public transit, all over the place. And it was a fair recruitment. I was very, I was on the subcommittee that helped out with that recruitment and we were very firm that we wanted it to be fair and transparent throughout the process. And we have entered negotiations with someone who's very exceptional and I'm very excited.
And they would all leave where they are to come here.
Yeah, we had a lot of people who were willing to come from far away to be the leader of Inner City Transit because we have a really good national reputation as a transit agency.
I did have one question. Um, 20% in terms of FT, or, uh, employment, what, does that, does that translate to a number? Like, there's jobs available, right?
Not yet. So the budget hasn't, I don't think we took action, final action on that budget, but we had our first hearing on it. We had our first discussion about anticipated growth. But yes, next year, I think if the funding is approved or if the, if the overall budget for the county public health department is approved, there will be some jobs in public health if you've got the credentials or the background to do one of those jobs. Yeah, folks should keep an eye on, in probably, I don't know, March, April, May of next year. We discussed the fact that they're probably going to need someone to help with the recruitments because they normally don't have that many vacant positions. They've got to try to fill all at once. So it's going to be sort of a, they're going to have to work through that big load. If they approve the creation of those positions, they can't fill them all at once.
If I may. At the South Sound Military Connections, uh, thing today, um, they talked about 1,000 people leaving the active duty military every year. And, um, the vast majority of them stay here from JBLM. So, um, in, in positions like Inner City Transit, we should highly consider military, um, because they are the best logistic, best at logistics and part of logistics is transportation. So, uh, some food for thought.
We can only hope that they apply and that they use the Veteran Services Hub, uh, to make those types of things happen. I think that would be fantastic. And with that, uh, we have reached the end of tonight's agenda and, um, well, if there's, if there's no objection, then I will call this meeting adjourned and I'll, in the words of Mayor Andy Ryder, you keep it classy, Lacey.
Night, everybody.